All right, I have six o'clock. Welcome to the May 1st Board of Allen Commissioners meeting. We're going to start our agenda off with Pledge of the Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just one housekeeping issue. We are now videotaping our meetings. So during the public comments section, we're going to ask that you come up to the podium, speak up there. We're going to go through our regular agenda items here first. Under our consent items, we have minutes of regular meeting, April 3rd, 2017. Take a motion to approve the minutes of April 3rd.
Commissioner, I give a motion to accept item, consent items two, A and B, which is the minutes and the financial reports, which I've read.
You have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
I think we have a change here.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in the wording...
Which one, the minutes?
Yeah, the minutes.
So is it a change from the public or a commissioner change?
Public.
Okay.
Maybe it's... If you want to ask. Me, I have to get to that part.
Okay, if you're paying me in.
You're involved in it.
So what is the change?
What is?
Is it to the minutes or to the financial report?
And who was making the change?
Ken, can you come to the podium?
Sure. Thank you for the record, Ken Van Busker. I just wanted to point out regarding the minutes of the April 3rd meeting, I did question why the item wasn't discussed about a levy lid lift. But the response that you gave me at the meeting was that it was removed from the agenda because the commissioners hadn't had time to review the supporting materials in the packet. And nothing was said about the commission wasn't in support of it. I just wondered if you'd take that as a friendly amendment to the minutes.
Can you repeat that? So what was in the packet that we were unaware of?
Well, you told me you hadn't had time to review it. It was a matrix of a possible levy lid lift from 18% to 45%.
18% of what?
Eighteen cents.
Eighteen, whatever it was.
Yeah, to 45 cents per thousand.
Yeah, and when I asked why you didn't have a discussion on it, you said that you had taken it off the agenda because you hadn't had time to look at it. But there was no mention about the commission wasn't in support of a... The board is not considering any increase at this time, so it was removed from the agenda. That was never talked about.
So we're not considering an increase? So in saying that...
I know, but you never, you never discussed that in the meeting, that you were not considering an increase. All you said was that you hadn't had time to look at the material.
So what would your amendment be, that we're not considering an increase?
No. My friendly amendment would be that you suggested that you hadn't had time to consider the material. That's what you told me.
Is that what we said during the meeting minutes or during the meeting?
Yeah. Larry had mentioned that because Ken had asked about that previously.
So you would like us to amend the minutes to say that we haven't had time to review...
That's, that's what you told me.
The matrix.
I mean, I, I, I'm glad the meetings are recorded now so that there's no confusion. But when I saw this, that's not what was said. He didn't have any discussion at all about it.
What's the friendly amendment?
That, I guess you tabled it because you hadn't had time to consider the materials that was in your supporting documents.
Jean, do you want to make that amendment?
Sure. I think we can just make a change to the meeting minutes, but just...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Take out not considering an increase at this time and just say that we had said that we didn't have time to review it, and that's why it was taken out the agenda list.
Okay. I'll change, I'll take that motion and just say with the corrections from Commissioner Van Busker.
Okay, we're going to amend the motion with the input from Commissioner Farmer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. She did second that, right?
I'm sorry.
On to action items, number three, A, B, and C. General vouchers, payroll vouchers, water fund vouchers.
Okay. I move action items, general fund voucher, $5,903.74. Payroll vouchers, $14,250.65. Water fund vouchers, $295.18. I move that we accept those as amended.
Motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Commissioner reports. Judy?
You guys want to go first?
Jean?
No, go ahead because I can't think of anything right now.
Okay, I'm trying to make this quick. Well, pretty much it is quick. April 3rd, of course, the regular court meeting. April 4th, we have the Sergeant Oyster House meeting with the North Bay Historical, Historical Society. And there were about, what, five or six of us, Dell?
Yeah.
And so we're moving forward with that. On the 6th, Bonnie and I did a presentation to the Rotary Club about the Sergeant Oyster House project. And it was really well received, and there was a lot of people that didn't really understand about what we're doing. And so we're really excited about it. It was really a good, a really good reception of it. And then April 6th, I'm sorry, the 4th is when I went in, April 6th, DNR focus group. There's usually about 28 people. As you well know, that's a pretty important economic impact in our area, so I try to go to that all the time. And in conjunction with that, April 22nd was Earth Day, so we had a Tahuya Forest cleanup day. And usually I feed everybody. There's about 30 people that go out and clean up the forest out there. We staged at Oak Patch, and so it is really a lot of fun. And then April 21st, PRTPO, which is Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization. And I'm not sure if you want me to go over any of that right now. One item of note that is kind of important, and there is a packet there, of one of the things that Kitsap County is doing, which this can help everybody, they're doing what they call a travel demand model. And they take all of the information about all of the roads. And there was a grant through PRTPO that did this model. And what they do is get all the data, not only of the road usage, but how those, how the transportation moves and what kind of jobs there are out there. And all of this will be available to any entity that needs this kind of information, whether it's for economic development or anything. And that will be ready in late June. So just wanted to keep you up to date on that. That was one of the highlights of it. There's also, they mentioned about a corridor sketch. They had a meeting in a corridor sketch is where they are going, they're going through, at this time, the meeting was April 25th. They had information about, I think, five, five major roads in Mason County that was important. And if you'll take a look at this, if you guys want to take a look at any of this information, this was their, their PowerPoint presentation. I had to leave early, so I wasn't able to take, you know, get all the information. But one of the highlights that I felt really important was Highway 300 and how dangerous it is and what, what we can do, what WashDOT can do about fixing some of those issues. There were a lot of WashDOT staff there that understood some of the important problems with it. So with this kind of looking at these things, and that means it can be on their lists for fixing those, the road problems. Loretta Swanson, who works with Mason County, she talked a lot about the issues here in Allen as well and what, and safety issues that needed to be done. Let me see. I think that's about it for PRTPO. And then North Mason Community Voice, Lynn Longen from EDC spoke, and we had, you know, kind of a small crowd, but at least it was really nice to see her up here. Another item too, Blacksmith Road Maintenance. I have property up there, and it's, it's just a rental, but they have had a dirt road for a very long time, and, and there's usually only like a handful of people that do all the work. So they are interested in trying to get a road improvement district. So I just want to let you know, I'm going to volunteer on there to see if we can help and if there's something that we can work with the county and, and all that. There we go.
All right, thanks, Jean.
Just not, not too much, just a regular meeting for the month and a couple notes of interest. Had a beaver dam breach this weekend over here.
Oh yeah, I heard about that.
It's pretty, it was huge. It was...
And it's happened before there?
Yeah. And so we went over there.
Victor, Victor.
In Victor, yeah. It was right kind of, kind of midway through. And so of course the water all came through somebody's yard and house and everything. So it was, it was a lot of water. It was definitely a lot of water. And then let everybody know, there's a gray whale out here.
Was there?
Yeah. So it was out the past few mornings over by Quonk, Quonk was over at the road over by Grapeview. And he's been out there, I think, three mornings, so if you get a chance, take a look. Cool?
Cool. I went to the regular report meeting. I did come in because I had a question about the vouchers. They didn't match, so I met with LeAnn and Jan. It was a payroll question. We were unable to figure out what the discrepancy was. I came in a second day, and Larry and I worked on it. We found the discrepancy, which was the voucher didn't match the payroll amount, and it's because it was last year's payroll amount. But as we looked further, we felt that there might have been a mistake in the payroll amount. So I'm going to recommend that we do a, do a workshop to try to, try to get to the bottom of it. We corrected it. I came in again when Jan did payroll, kind of explained to her what I thought I had seen there, and we kind of all agreed that that was the right amount.
But it didn't add up?
It, it, the numbers weren't, weren't working. I couldn't get them to add up. So we made some corrections, but now we have to get together and probably modify the director's contract so the right amount of payroll is on there, and we have it on record.
Was it a large amount or just small?
No, I think the, the insurance might have got added in twice, so we'll...
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah. Good. I did have lunch with Randy Netherland. I don't know the date, the exact date, but he had approached me at EDC and said there was a potential site up near Log Yard Road. The county's, county's looking at it, MTA's looking at it. The, I think it's up there by the sewer plant, and just thought that it might be viable for us if we're still looking to do a business park. Said it would not be viable for a sports complex, which he thought was kind of our, our prize project that we were working on. I said, no, we got business park in our objectives as well, and that I would bring it to you guys as a... I told him that we've already got Larry out looking at property for projects, and it's an Overton piece, and...
That's what I was going to add.
Yeah, so Larry can meet with David Overton because we've already given him that direction to meet with property owners for any of our projects and...
Do you know how many acres that is?
It was, it was five or 10.
Okay.
But nothing else.
Five are an option for five, right?
Yeah. So I don't know if Overtons have contacted you or if you're going to contact Overtons, but I moved it off to Larry. EDC meeting was kind of a regular board meeting. Nothing of importance came out of that. And that was it. I would like to schedule that workshop, though, before we go home tonight because sometimes we forget when we go home. And that's it for me. Executive Director's Report.
All right. Meeting videos, as you can readily see, in the interest of increased transparency, as you approved at the last meeting, we're now videotaping our meetings. They're also being live streamed. There'll be a link on our website to the YouTube channel where people can go and watch the meeting. Because the camera's in a fixed position, speakers wanting to address the commissioners will have to come to the podium and speak rather than speak from their seats as they traditionally done. Website update. We're in the process of updating our website. We simplified it by eliminating the things we didn't really use and reorganizing materials on it in a more user-friendly way. We'll be adding a public records request form and facilities reservations form. It should have those in place hopefully this coming week. We've also linked it to our Facebook page, and now it is scalable for mobile. Allen Community Association request. We've received a request from the ACA to be allowed to build a storage shed on port property to store all their Allen Days materials. They're currently looking for a way to save money on that storage. I put this on the agenda for discussion. Skateboard park. Jean suggested we look into the idea of building a skateboard park.
Great idea.
I was somewhat involved in the one built at South Kitsap Regional Park, so I've got at least a working knowledge of how these go together. Excuse me. Big question is the location. It needs to be successful, and by that, that means having kids actually use them and not have them become graffiti magnets. They need to be within walking, skating distance of where kids actually live. The one at South Kitsap Regional Park is very successful because it's centrally located within walking and skating distance of about 1,000 homes. By comparison, the one at Silverdale's covered in graffiti and doesn't get much use because it's located next to a freeway interchange, and it's not close enough to the residential areas to make it close enough or easy for kids to get to. With this in mind, Beards Cove and Lynch Cove are probably the best prospective places. I've written a letter to the Beards Cove Association manager asking about covenants, restrictions, and similar issues. He will present it to the Homeowners Association Board to see if they're even interested in having us do this at their next meeting. To do it, we'll need to acquire some land, although there are grants available from RCO for those purposes, if the association allows us to move forward and you all decide to move forward. LeAnn also tells me a similar project was on the port's radar some years ago, and that some plans had been drawn for skateboard, skateboard park next to the existing basketball court outside. So if you want to move forward, we can try and locate those and see what we have, and that's also a discussion item on the agenda. Water system issues. Todd Kraus of Northwest Water Systems has assigned this to a subordinate. He tells me the May 30th submission deadline, or submission date is still viable, depending on some additional documentation he needs, which he told me about in an email at 4:00 PM on Friday, after considerable prompting for information about where we are. We will have that documentation to him this week. Excuse me. Also, our water system franchise agreement with Mason County is up for renewal this year. County has 27 agreements that need to be renewed this year. However, we don't yet know if we're in the first group, which is the June-July timeframe, or the second, which is September-October. We don't have to do anything more than we've already done at the moment. They'll send us information as we get closer. We've already obtained and updated evidence, coverage, insurance form from Mendoza, and the county will send us a copy of their required form when it's time, so we're good to go at the moment. As I noted previously, I've negotiated our costs with Northwest Water Systems not to exceed $7,500 for the submission of the plan, and kept Joe Rogan in the loop on all our communications, just in case. Sevo bricks, time to work on this again.
Could we approve this since Jean just...
I've written a story for the news media I'll submit this week, and we should have enough response to be able to sell a lot more bricks. We can add 26 of the larger bricks at a sale price of $250 each, and another 60 smaller bricks for a total of 93 small bricks. Cost of the project is approximately $4,500 to do it. Revenue is $15,008, or an estimated profit of $11,300. Derelict vessel, as I've said all along, I didn't expect the sale to bring much adoption, certainly not enough to pay the mortgage cost, plus all our administrative costs. However, my understanding, DNR will reimburse us for 90% of our costs. We've submitted all the paperwork that we expect to receive in the neighborhood of $3,3,500. Bias software upgrade. Excuse me. I spoke with Bias again this last week and alerted them we will be moving forward. We settled on July 1st as a date to start the conversion. However, what that will entail is us filling out spreadsheets and other paperwork for them so they can get it set up. Once we're set up, we'll begin training. Our actual conversion date, however, will be January 1, 2018, so we will remain on QuickBooks until year's end. I talked to her about the payments. We don't have to make the first half of the 4818 annual fee until next year, so we can include that in next year's budget. We'll have to make the 35, 3805 one-time startup fee sometime near the end of the year. However, depending on setup and training times, they will invoice us near the end of those, and we have 30 days for billing, so it's entirely possible none of this could come due this year at all. Everhard legal cost reimbursement. I spoke with our representative from Mendoza last week, and again, at five minutes to five, he ensured me we will receive the check, which should be in the neighborhood of $85,000, either before this week is out, hopefully, but if not, within the next 10 days for certain.
Great.
I recommend we allocate those funds as follows. Payback the IDD fund, $30,000, which is in the general budget. Fund the reserve account at $25,000. We budgeted 20, so I'd like to add 5,000 more. Convert to Bias for 6214. That's our upfront cost plus half the annual cost, but as I just said, we may not have to spend any of that this year. Valfair weighfinding sign, 2,500, which is in our capital budget. Oyster House, $5,000, although our capital budget has 10,000. Public records OCR software setup, 7,500. We budgeted 5,000 for public records. I'll talk about this in a little bit. This will leave us between $9,000 and $10,000, depending on how much the Mendoza check is, plus approximately 62,000 that we have budgeted and won't have to spend from our property tax and other revenues. So barring any surprises, with our budgeted cash carryover of 43503, it's possible we could carry over more than $100,000 into 2018, even after paying the unbudgeted 7,500 for Northwest Water Systems. Allen Boat Launch dock repair. The hardware securing the dock at the Allen Boat Launch failed during the recent storms at several of the pilings. We secured the necessary hardware. Repairs been done with no other damage. Okay, going back to the public records issues, we're in a holding pattern on this at the moment. I'm convinced the best, most workable solution appears to be what we originally concluded, inverting our existing documents to OCR electronic files that can be read with keyword software, storing them in the cloud for future retrieval. Should be a fairly easy solution to implement once we find a cost-effective vendor. We've talked with vendors where the price has been anywhere from about $7,000 to $60,000. Just depends on the vendor. We originally thought Kelly Imaging offered the most viable option, but I thought at the time it was too pricey. We've done webinars with a number of other potential vendors, but after talking to them, Kelly is beginning to look like the best price, although it exceeds our established public records budget. Meanwhile, I'm continuing to research other vendors, so we're still on hold for a little while longer. But at some point, we're going to need to make a decision on moving forward or not. New computer for LeAnn. We're still having some issues trying to migrate all of her data from her old machine to her new one. All of the cloud-based data's moved, but it's the older data in QuickBooks that's giving us trouble. Charles is on the case. Running out the small office when this was brought up last month. There's no real consensus about moving forward on this or in exactly what way or not, so that's something you might want to talk about. Entrepreneurial classes. We're continuing to hold these classes here, and in fact, had one here this afternoon. Coder Dojo classes. To be honest, I haven't had much time to work on this. It's also in a holding pattern for now. Expect to be able to focus on this again towards the end of May is something I strongly believe in. Another project on hold is ROII, awaiting a decision from Allen I as to whether or not we're eligible as part of builders' association. But I've also begun looking at other business associations with similar plans for us to align with as members. AWB is a strong possibility, waiting for more information from them. LTAC money. I attended the last LTAC meeting. James County is trying to hire an executive director to run this essentially Visitor and Convention Bureau. I wasn't clear on whether or not they're going to replace the Blue Collar Group, which has been marketing Mason County through the Explorers Canal website or not. Also made sure to get on the mailing list for LTAC. Next LTAC meeting's July 27th. That meeting will be to review and make recommendations on awards with 2018 Visitor Information Center services and tourist development promotion. RFPs, a go-out for advertising for applications for money by the middle of this month. Trade show booths. We're putting together professional-looking trade show booths to replace the half-hazard setup we use now. Spent some time looking at what other folks use, and came to the conclusion we could do this for about $1,000 using several pop-up stands like the one we already use. Nice thing about those is they're portable. Hardware is reusable if we want to change out the images from time to time. Cost of changing the images is under $100.
Great.
Water at the Allen Marina, as I reported last month, they came across an RCO grant for exactly this type of project. Because of the short timeframe, the main hang-up has been getting a realistic handle on cost of the project to submit for the grant. To qualify for the grant, we needed to have an engineer's estimate, so I engaged Art Anderson and Associates for that. They're a highly reputable Bremerton firm that does green engineering and more, and they are on the MRSC list, so we didn't have to go out to bid for that. They designed Port Orchard City Home, currently working with the Ports of Shelton and Bremerton on several projects. We're working directly with Ben Anderson, who's the CEO and also the current board chair of the Kitsap BDC. Grant requires a 25% match, but part of that can be in-kind, including our own labor and materials. I spoke to Don about running the water line down there. Need a larger line, and he can do that. His time and materials would count against the in-kind. We could fund any balance of the match with the loans from the IDD or out of our capital budget, but we can cross that bridge when we get there. We're almost finished with this, and still have until midnight tomorrow to submit the grant, so we should be in good shape. County's grant writers said she'll review it before we submit. Potential business park, sports complex property. I met with Commissioner Netherland and Dr. Brian Peterson recently, at Commissioner Netherland's request, to discuss our interest in securing development property directly adjacent to the proposed MTA partner I. If the east side of Highway 3 site is selected, we'd be looking at five acres of Overton land with an option on an additional five. I told them to bring me the proposal, and I would submit, present it to the three of you for your review and a possible decision. WPPA spring meeting. WPPA spring meeting is set for May 17th to 19th at Zoncadian. We've made hotel reservations for myself, Scott, and Judy. Block of WPPA rooms is gone the first day, which is when we called, but I did get his reservations in the adjacent condos. Registered myself as WPPA, but until Scott and Judy know for certain whether they're going, I held off registering each of you because there's a $75 cancellation fee. I can cancel the condo reservations at any time with no fee. Other meetings are the Finance and Administration Seminar, which is June 14th through 16th at Semiamo. Executive Director's Annual Seminars, July 12th through 14th in Long Beach. Small Port Seminar, October 25th, 27th, in Leavenworth, and the annual meeting, November 15th to 17th at Seattle. WPPA appointment. I was appointed, I reported last meeting I'd been appointed to the WPPA Legislative Committee. Was already a part of the Economic Development Committee. WPPA's new Government Affairs Manager has asked me to serve on the Marina Committee as well. And finally, vacation. I didn't take nearly as much time off from my hips from surgery as I originally anticipated. Can still have four days of vacation from 2016, plus I didn't take any vacation time at all in 2015, and still have some sick days accumulated. I'd like to take off July 18th to 25th, the week after Allen Day, planning a baseball game road trip with Bryce. Planning a baseball game road trip with Bryce.
I think you've earned a seven-day vacation.
Yeah, really. I have three questions on your, on your report. The gazebo bricks?
Yes.
Can we make sure to cash those checks that are sitting in there?
Yeah, we will. Now that we know we're going to go forward. I didn't want to have to go through the bookkeeping back and forth.
With the refunds.
And then the second one was the public records. I mean, I'm sure you will do this, but let's make sure it's very user-friendly.
Yeah, that's the whole idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the LTAC money, I have questions because I serve on that committee. And normally, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it about this time of year they're meeting and deciding what festivals they're going to support for the summer and fall? Pretty close.
But not at this year, it would be for next year. Usually, they've already, they've already figured out 2017.
Okay.
Used to be.
I can't remember when they used to meet.
We used to, we were always behind the National Association, but we were usually getting them in in October.
Of last year.
Like if we did October this year, it'd be 2018 that they would order, wouldn't order us funds. So we're always, you know, having to get it in the year, so to speak, the year ahead.
I think probably the good thing to do is we find out who serves on that committee and then find out what their schedules are.
Yeah, I went to the meeting and who I saw there was Heidi McCutcheon.
Yeah.
Stephanie.
Roll the dice.
Terry and somebody else. I can't remember who it was. And that's all that came to that particular meeting.
Heidi's the source.
Yeah. She's been very helpful to me for a number of things.
The, I know it says it right here, but we have to have that grant submitted by midnight tomorrow.
Midnight tomorrow.
That's going to happen?
Yes.
Has Ben give us an engineer's estimate?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay.
I, I've already got that. I'm waiting on prices on pavement for parking. I'm supposed to have that by 7 o'clock tomorrow morning.
And the grant would include?
Power and water to disappear for 12 mortgage slips, plus the power pedestal and all of the engineering and everything else that go with it.
And paving of the parking lot?
And paving the parking lot.
How much area, how much square footage of the parking lot?
I'll know tomorrow morning at 7 o'clock. Don made a drawing for me that I know how to figure out square footage.
Okay.
When like both sides are equal.
Yeah.
Should've called Jeff.
I don't know how to figure it out the other way.
And a pay station?
Pardon?
And a pay station?
And a pay station.
Thank you.
I had a question. Did, how many people showed up at the classes? I'm excited to hear about the classes.
Any handful. I didn't come down here and count, but it was four or five cars on here.
Good. We talked about that at North Mason Community Voice and we, we just need to get the word out because there's a lot of people interested, but they didn't know about it.
Well, I put it up on our Facebook page, but now once we get the website finished up, we got a place for community stuff on the website that we didn't have before.
Great.
There was an income cap as well. You had to make this certain amount or less, or you couldn't participate.
But they didn't even know about it. Many people didn't even know about it, so.
Oh, they didn't?
We just need to get the word out.
Well, I know the EDC has promoted it and the Chamber's promoted it and we've promoted it.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not saying that we haven't, but just, you know, like even at the hub, there's a lot of people there and a big variety of economic, you know, diversity there.
They have flyers there. I noticed that's the Chamber being.
Oh, good. Okay. All right, just passing it on.
Thanks, Judy. Security report. Travis?
Oh, yeah. Going to the podium.
That's right.
Look where are you going?
You said that we had to come up here if we were going to address you guys.
No, no, no. I didn't want to walk in front of the camera. Get a shot of my back.
Thanks for being smart about it.
All right. Security report. Not much going on. There was a few, a few incidents. We did have a gentleman that decided he was going to sleep right behind that door. And he was actually somebody that had been trespassed here criminally two years ago. So he wouldn't leave, of course, from me talking to him. So Mason County Sheriff was involved. They finally showed up, kind of herded him off the property, and that was kind of the end of that. It didn't really turn into any kind of physical incident or anything, but he was extremely intoxicated.
Did you find him there or did somebody?
No, I found him.
You found him?
Yeah.
I've also talked to Don about putting a gate up there.
Okay.
Yeah, and that should help solve the situation of being able to hide in that corner where the heat pump used to be. Traffic in the park is starting to pick up. The daylight hours, of course, have increased, so we're getting more and more people around. But they're all pretty cordial and we haven't had any real incidents. The gentleman that was stealing power from us at the North Shore has not returned.
Oh, good.
We provided him notice that he wasn't allowed to come back and he has not come back, so hopefully that solves the issue.
What's the plan for Saturday?
Saturday?
That was my question.
Five, 5:50 I'll be there? Does that work?
PM?
Oh, PM, that'd be fine. I prefer PM. No, I'm busy 5:50 PM on a Friday, so.
Are you taking that 5:50 shit?
It'll have to be AM.
I'll take the next one.
Take the next one.
Where are you going to be down there?
Don's usually there too. So, I mean, between Don and I, we've never had any real issues.
I can't remember, was the pay station up last year when?
Yes, the pay station was up last year.
Was, okay. So that'll, that helps a lot.
It helps a lot, sure. It's really more, more of us being down there is to really kind of keep the traffic flowing properly and get people to park in a manner that creates the most parking spaces available so we have less people parking on the road. But we're still going to have.
So if y'all don't know, Saturday's is opening day for pizza.
Probably our busiest, is the busiest day of the year for us, so.
The day I was down there, I jumped somebody's boat with a dead battery. I backed somebody's boat because they couldn't get it.
Right.
I pulled somebody's boat out because they, they couldn't do both and it was busy, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's just having an extra hand down there I think's helpful.
Sure, because sometimes, I mean, you get somebody there that really isn't very proficient at getting their boat in the water and it really clogs things up.
When there's 20 people waiting for you, it makes it even worse.
Yeah, I've seen it almost get backed up onto the road.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the last thing. Yeah, I don't think it was last year, we did have someone park on the road and they parked their trailer over the white line and somebody called the cops and the cops came down and they had them towed. And so when he came back, he didn't have his, his vehicle there to pull his boat out, so.
But it's actually kind of entertaining.
And we like to be friendly to the neighbors because our neighbors are friendly to us.
Right. And help us keep a watch on the place because we can't be there 24/7.
Appreciate it, too.
Think that'll be it?
Thanks, Travis. Appreciate it.
Are you going to try to be down there?
Not at 5:50.
Okay. Well, we can talk about that. If I need to get down there, I will to help.
Next item on our agenda is new business. We, discussion of EDC Membership Drive sponsorship. Larry, what do you know about that?
The EDC contacted me. They would like to know if we're interested in sponsoring their Membership Drive thing event. They have it at the Ridge Motorsports Park a couple of weeks from now, from 4 to 7 PM. Cost is $1,000. We would get the same recognition as all the other sponsors. And you can drive on the track if you want.
I would be interested in sponsoring an event if it happened in North Mason. I am not necessarily interested in spending another $1,000 of North Mason tax dollars for a South Mason event.
I would agree with that.
I would agree with that also.
Tell them to come up here. We like them up here.
We would happily support a North Mason Membership Drive.
Okay. I'll pass that on.
Thank you. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Discussion of ACA locating a storage building on Port property?
Where? Yeah.
That would all be up to you.
And how big?
That would all be up to you.
What's the ask?
I, I think what they're looking for, they're renting a storage unit now and I think they're looking for something about the same size.
Didn't they ask that once before?
Yeah.
A long time ago?
Could be, yeah. Well, they've asked a lot of things. But, you know, like where the Oyster House is right now with all the storage in there, I don't know if we could fit another building in there.
I don't think you can fit another one. Something we talked about was maybe like right up in this corner of the fence, you know, just right outside the door.
Oh, sure.
So it doesn't really get used for anything.
And that's easy in and easy out.
It doesn't get used during Allen Days.
Yeah, my, my only fear would be where does it end? I mean, who else do we have to give storied space to? They're, they're, they're a group amongst our.
What I would suggest is that we tell them, yeah, you can build the building here, but the port alone the building and lease it to you for a dollar a year for however.
Yeah, I just, I, I think that, that could open Pandora's box.
You know what?
Could Lynch Cove, homeowners association put a building here as well? And Beards Cove Association?
That'd be a good one.
And Hub and?
Well, none of them have events here.
Yeah, the only caveat would be that is that they do have events here.
Is there more than one event here?
No, I mean the Allen Community Association host the event.
One event?
Yes, correct.
I would want to look at their financials.
Okay.
That's what I'd want to do.
Richard was supposed to be here to do a presentation.
Well, maybe we could table it until he can come and?
Okay.
And then, of course, the question is, what do they need? You know, we don't know that yet, you know?
Yeah, they didn't talk about any size. They just wanted me to run it by you guys, see if you're open to the idea and then go from there.
Okay.
So table till we hear back from Richard?
He was going out of town to someplace tomorrow morning. I think that's always done here.
Do you know how big of units they rent now? Because I think it's kind of dispersed everywhere, isn't it? Jeff, no?
After they pulled it from our facility, it was more centrally located, but I don't remember what size they ended up renting.
Did they use any storage up here?
They have two storage, a, a small one, I think a 10 by 10, and another one is 10 by 20, I think.
Oh, that's the one up here?
Pretty good size then.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty good sized.
Next item under new business is discussion of skateboard park.
So I brought it up to Larry one day because I know we want to do the soccer park. We also all know that that's going to be quite expensive. It's going to take a while to do and it's, it could be years before it's actually operational. But in the meantime, there's not a lot for the youth to do in the north end. We have a basketball court here, really. Really, that's kind of about it, I think. And so I thought, you know, why don't we do something for our youth? And then he had the idea of, I mean, I just had the idea and I don't know how much it's going to cost. I don't know any of that sort of thing. But he, he knows this and he knows a great place to put it would be right where the kids are at. And, I mean, there's.
That's what makes them work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so there's places I think you could probably put it.
I drove around Beards Cove and looked and there's some vacant lots there. There's one lot that's got like a little playground on it. And then there's a corner lot, like within sight of that, that might not be a bad spot.
What about near the pool?
That's what I was thinking too, yeah.
I think the thing, the problem with that is the gate gets locked.
Not on the school property, but near the pool property?
No, and he's talking of Beards Cove because, not the school. Is that what you're saying?
The pool.
The pool, sorry. Yes. Well, not in the, not near that. I, I don't.
Down below, right?
Yeah.
But some parts will near the pool.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. Because that's relatively close to still.
Well, that's where that lot was that I was talking about. Do you know where the gate is for the pool?
Yeah.
It's kind of like across the street from that.
I believe that there's lots in Beards Cove that people would like to see cleaned up that have been kind of eyesores for quite some time. I'm thinking right there on Larson Lake Boulevard, 580 maybe? I don't know if it's.
Is it, is it a lot? Would the lot be big enough?
Yeah, this is a nice big lot.
Okay.
It's going to be like a drug den, is what it's going to be. I know nobody wants to talk about. Remember the bike park that was down below in Lower Lynch Cove? I live right above it and I used to stand out there nightly with a shotgun chasing people out there dealing drugs. For 15 years I plowed it. Finally the cops shut it down, but if you put anything like that up there, there are those, the police are up in that neighborhood 24/7 chasing scumbags out there. And that's where they're going to go because all the kids are going to be there and there's going to be, the problem with that place, seeing where it's 90% brownies.
Yeah.
And it's not Mason County people per se that grew up and live here and respect it. It's people from, they're just getting a cheap trailer to live in. And it's, it, I, I, I think that'd be a bad hit at a skateboard park. The only thing that'd be nice is all the criminals we sent relocated in one smaller area.
May I add?
It's not going to be fun. I'm going to be having to handle it myself and I'm not going to be happy about it.
May I add, when we were looking at it before, you know, it was, we were looking at county property behind the high school and seeing if we could work out a deal there. So county still does own property behind there. School district still does and that might be a good location. Well-maintained, high visibility.
Security.
Yeah, security.
Have somebody take care of it because it's hitting on the residents there.
Right. And you're right, because in that area, I know how it is with a small community, it's really hard.
Plus they have closer security there probably, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what we did.
Part of what makes the, the one in Port Orchard work is the fact that it is high visibility.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's right on.
London.
Lund Avenue.
Yeah.
And.
Is that a Parks District owned? Is that a park district? Or do you know?
There's a park district that runs the park.
Okay.
And they own it.
And there's a lot of other things there. There's, and one in Port Orchard, there's a family park there, there's.
Baseball.
Ice cream trails, so there's a lot of families right there. If you put a Beards Cove tucked in somewhere, that's going to be scumbag central. Nobody's going to go there except the scumbag.
Darn.
I'm sorry.
We want to upgrade.
The scumbag.
But I like that idea about behind the high school.
Well, it was a really good location and, but you know how politics go and it was just, it was a big hurdle because it was county owned.
So it was pushed back.
Yeah. And we needed support, you know, a lot more support.
So maybe we just need to think of some places.
Yeah.
Well, I think the county...
Ken and I had discussed Bill Hunter Park at one point.
Well, that would be, I, well, you know that piece of property behind Hunter Park?
Yeah.
That part, that place.
Yeah, but isn't that just basically a...
Wetland.
A wetland?
A wetland.
Yeah, we'd have to find parking and...
Yeah, yeah. Then you'd have that parking issue...
You don't have to have parking necessarily, do you?
Across the street.
Well, the, the parents would have to come.
You're right.
Or what about like where the ball fields are?
At Sand Hill?
Is there a room up there?
I don't, you know, I think it's great, but I don't know if that would be really viable as easily as near the high school? Cause there is so much more, and there are more teenagers where those are grade school.
Is there a lot of residential around there?
Well, there's Bell, there's Bell, you mean, Sand Hill or...
Where you're talking about, about high school.
Well, there's Bell Town.
What's your real critical component is for it to be within walking distance of where kids live.
The only thing that's close is Bellwood, and that's it.
Yeah, that's it, I'm sorry.
It's not a bigger Bellwood.
That's the big issue about it.
But kids get off school, huh?
Well, I know, that's just it.
Close where they go to school, yeah. It'll probably be about, probably seventeen hundred in there every day if they wanna go to it.
Right. So would you support that, up, up at the high school if we ask?
I'll support it anywhere except by, I'll just put it right by your guys' house.
Now, for the record, for the record, your name?
Yes, yeah, I support it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into it.
All right, thanks, Gene. Um, nothing under old business agenda items, so we're gonna move on to public comment.
I have a request.
Sure.
Did I, just like gotta stand up here. During the Allen days, we got, uh, uh, use of Paul Bunyan and Babe the Blue Ox, and we need a place to put it. And it's up what'd be nice to put it right up above the building here, right in front. It could put the, uh, Paul Bunyan just north of the building and Babe right in front of the building. And it'd be there Friday afternoon through Sunday, and I don't think it would interfere with any of the business of the port.
Take up any parking?
And it'd be very visible out there on the highway, and, and, uh, it's all to bring people in.
Sure.
So, we wouldn't lose parking?
What?
We wouldn't lose parking?
Well, uh...
Well, sure, you probably would've.
It's two, two trailers, they're on two trailers, and you'd lose that much space, but they could park around it, so...
Well, it's historical too, as you know.
Yeah, and there's not much, well, do, people do crowd in and park around here during the Allen days anyway, and it's, but, uh, if we get it in there on Friday, why? People would be parking in around it.
Sure.
So, I think it's a good thing to have, uh, Mason, uh, yeah, Mason County Historical Society bought Babe and, and Paul Bunyan. Cause the guy that owned it was, he was very sick, and he was gonna, he either had to sell it, or he was gonna scrap it out. And it's kind of a historic marker. It was in the mid fifties, it was at, uh, Binger's Gas Station in Shelton.
Yeah.
For many years through the sixties, and then it disappeared. And then this guy got it and restored them both with, with his money, and, and he was gonna give it up, so we come up with the money and bought it.
May I suggest to the board that we try it this year?
Yeah, I would support that.
Okay.
And just work with Larry on placement on that Friday and...
Yeah, okay.
And probably, you know, work with the ACA representative as well, since it's their event, so I mean, I know that you're part of it.
Well, I'm, I'm part of the ACA.
As long as they're okay and we're okay and we're all on the same page, I think it's, it would be fine, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Dell.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, Ken.
Thank you, Commissioner. I wanna first start, I attended the, uh, voice meeting where Lynn Logg- Logan of the EDC talked. And, um, I suggested her to her, and I'm gonna suggest to you folks that something that the port should consider with this new, uh, Mason Transit Park and Ride going in, uh, somewhere up there on the plateau, is perhaps you could partner with the Puget Sound Naval Shipyard, um, and work towards a commuter rail line that could potentially go all the way from Shelton to, uh, to the naval facilities in Bremerton and Silverdale. There's, as you know, traffic's pretty bad, but, um, that's something that I think that the port might be able to get in on the bottom floor of, and it would be a really, a good thing to have happen. She, she said that, uh, you know, she wants to get away from bedroom communities, but North Mason's always been a bedroom community to the, to the naval facilities up there. And the, the, uh, other things I wanted to mention was, after that last April third meeting, Director Coppola sent me a copy of the port's comprehensive scheme that I, that I wanna, I'll touch on. But first, um, he failed to mention the April eleventh, uh, letter that he sent to the Port of Duwato. I don't know if you folks were aware that he had sent a letter to them, and I think that's what some of these folks are here to talk about. That same day, Commissioner Netherton mentioned that he met Mr. Coppola and a representative of the Allen Belfair, whatever they call themselves. Um, and you mentioned, Commissioner Cooper, that you met, you met with Commissioner Netherton. Was there a representative of the Allen Belfair group at that meeting as well?
No, just, uh, Commissioner Netherton and myself.
Okay. Um, in, in any case, I sent a message to, uh, Director Coppola and to the supposed director of that ABC committee, trying to figure out who all is on that, uh, committee. And I received a very rude response from him, and it's a public record since it was sent to two of the three commissioners and to Mr. Coppola. And I'd just like you to consider that before any, any of you have any more meetings with that individual.
Clarify, he didn't get a rude response from me.
Right.
No, no, I did not, I did not say that. And it, I actually, you directed me who you thought might be the chairman of that committee, that's why I was trying to find out. But, so, I just would like you to consider that. And lastly, I, I looked at that comprehensive scheme that, that, uh, Director Coppola sent to me. And I, I think you might wanna hold a public forum on that with your constituents. I went through, and you held two public hearings on it. There was two members of the public there, but there was no comments from the public. And I, I think there's a couple of things that have changed in regards to Project Four, the soccer baseball complex, and with what's going on at the high school, they, they're, right now, they're not planning to build a new stadium. And they ran out of money on the bond, and they, uh, approved a four million dollar, non-voter approved obligated bond. And I think they're not gonna build a new stadium, is what it looks like. And the other thing is, Project Seven, that Sweetwater Park, um, in your implementation strategy and your, uh, uh, goals, you say it's revenue neutral, um, there's really no reason to pursue it. So, anyway, thank you for your time, and, um, look forward to...
Thanks, Ken. I think the, uh, Delight Rail is a wonderful idea. That's something we could make work. I, I'm all over it.
It would be, it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I clarify something about the comprehensive scheme also? You know, we update that once a year, and we generally work on it August, September, October, and submit it to RCO and to the state, so they know what we're planning. When we, we were talking about some of those things that are in there in August and September, we did hold two public hearings about it, but it changes from year to year, so...
Nobody's gonna publicly comment.
Well, the public was invited to comment, nobody showed up.
I think you need to, like I said, have a forum on it with, with your constituents and talk to them.
We will.
No, that's not a bad idea.
Earl, come on up.
Well, thank you, Port of Allen. Um, my name is Earl Liddings, and I'm both a half resident of the Port of Duwato and Port of Allen, and I, we own, our family owns land in both. First, I wanna say, we haven't had this much discussion and business in the Port of Duwato. Probably in the last three years is how long it's taken to have a meeting that's only gone an hour for any discussion, so thanks. You guys run a lot better.
Thank you.
Not trying to hurt the Port Commissioners of Duwato, but they are a lot, lot slower and different. But I wanna start off here tonight. Um, first, I wanted to comment on your April first, or April third meeting minutes, where there was discussions between Mr. Coppola and myself on some of our commercial holdings in the Port of Allen District. And please, um, you know, take this the right direction or the right way, but I don't recall that discussion exactly being the way as it's written. It could be my memory, or it could be something, is this the phone conversation we have to introduce us to the actual site visit that I met with you on the property? Or was it the property visit?
Kind of a combination of both.
So that's, that's kinda what I thought. Um, anyway, I wanna make it very clear, uh, from my recollection, from our meeting out at the property, that I specifically noted that my commercial industrial land on Highway Three in the Port of Allen there, off Log Yard Road, would not make a suitable ball field.
Right.
It's all commercial activity, trucks, logging, chipping, you know, I mean, it's huge. So, if you wanna have your kids bouncing balls around a bunch of big rigs, then I guess it'd be a great place to have a ballpark. The other thing that that discussion came out of also led into some discussions about a Port of Duwato. And the discussion that I had with Mr. Coppola that I remember was that there was discussions potentially trying to help the Port of Duwato. Uh, maybe help manage or help do something, cause they are a little unorganized. And the only thing that I warned the Port of Allen to do was to be careful about getting involved with anything with the Port of Duwato. And so here, that's, that's why I'm getting here now. I'm gonna kinda back up to the history of the Port of Duwato residents. As you're gonna see from some of the people that are actually in this room that are long-term residents, and there's like even more that couldn't make it today. Uh, but there's quite a few, um, there's quite a few upset individuals out there. And the reason being is we're upgrading our comprehensive plan, and the first time this plan was actually implemented, there was no comment, period. There was no community involvement. And this plan incorporates walking trails by condemning private property for mass ecotourism, giant commercial RV parks, cell towers, mini storage, pretty much everything that the residents in Duwato move to get away from is what the, the commissioners adopted and, and, and pretty much put on, made it in stone. So through this discussion process, there's been several port meetings where I was one of the, one of several citizens that stood up and said, before you adopt or amend the new comprehensive plan, you need to have a community citizen advisory board, or at least several town meetings to discuss what the public wants. And this is extremely important for the port of, to Allen and any other port for that, and also the Port of Duwato mainly. We do not want any more commercial economic growth and viability there. In fact, we don't even want any economic growth in Duwato. Duwato is a sacred little jewel at the end of, pretty much, if you go back three hundred years and we started in Ellis Island, you can't go any farther than Duwato now, so we've kinda developed everything in the middle, or skipped over it. So the biggest thing that the community down there would like to see is it being protected. Protect the citizens that live there, and you're gonna be speaking with several of them that are actually here tonight. One of the biggest things we do not want is any more trouble, and the trouble is the campgrounds. The trouble is unsupervised recreational activities. We call nine-one-one, they could show up tomorrow. So, you know, we're on our own down here, and you're gonna hear from these individuals. Through this process though, as it's come to more and more discussions, there's been a lot of graveling amongst the community as to several items that are taking place. One is, what is the Port of Duwato going to do with the comprehensive plan? Are they going to listen to the public? Or are they gonna try and implement their own pet project again? So we're up in arms, you know, we're not liking it. Two is, is that there's been discussions that, um, there is potential movement from the Port of Allen to not just only help, but the direct discussions have been made of merging or annexing with the Port of Allen. And this was verified from the commissioners at the last commission meeting, that there were discussions of annexing Duwato into the Port of Allen. So this brings up the question that I bring up for my next analysis is, I own property in Port of Allen, I understand that, but it's in Belfair. There's been discussions about name changing between Allen, Belfair, Allen Belfair Co-op, Belfair, Allen Port, or the North Mason Port. There's been discussions by individuals. I would like to be part of that record, since I have seventy acres of commercial industrial land in the Port of Allen District. I don't wanna put Belfair Industrial Park up and then find out you changed the name to the North Mason Port District, which then would also be kinda contradictory, because Port of Duwato is in North, is in North Mason, so how could you name something the North Mason Port District if the Port of Duwato exists? So these rumblings have not just evolved on their own. So we wanna know, as citizens, has there been discussions about annexing from the Port of Allen themselves? Because the commissioners in the Port of Duwato said, yes, that has happened. Not so much annexing was the word, merging, which if you read it in the dictionary, it's the same thing. So, with that aside, moving forward, there's gonna be other residents, they're gonna probably come up and speak as well, about their problems that they see in the Port of Duwato. I support the Port of Allen developing growth, working for the citizens, working for tourism. Allen and Belfair are not Duwato.
Sure.
But the people reside, and we're all a neighbor. You know, we're all, Belfair's far out for most people. Duwato's just a little farther. Tully, Tully's even farther than Duwato, so... But moving forward, um, really would like to be kept in the loop. And if there's any knowledge of a citizen advisory committee, or if there is anybody trying to discuss name changing or merging, I have millions of dollars invested in here in this community. I wanna know what the name's gonna be. The other thing I wanted to just strictly talk about was the security at the boat ramp. So you know I live there at four seven nine one North Shore Road. I see everything, from the drug dealings to the shootings the other night, to whatever it may be.
Tried to chase me, tried to chase me off one day.
I did, I didn't know, you were looking around the gate. Oh, sorry.
Checking the damage to the fence.
I know, you know, it's like, you know, I, I can't really shoot my guns in my house like I can in Duwato, so, you know, I gotta be a little nicer, but... There has been a lot of negative activity down there. I wanna thank you by putting in the lights. It's really cut down the activity. However, the activity is getting aggressive again, and it's happening from Thursday to Saturday night, from ten to two. And it's associated with other neighbors that are in that area, but I'm not gonna point fingers, let the cops do their jobs, but just know that if there's any way to get some random patrols with the police or the security guard between ten and two, the last year and a half, those are the hours. The other thing is, there's been boat activity, coming in to meet with those individuals. So whatever's being delivered or dropped off is being done by boat, with electric motors from ten to two, to whoever's in the parking lot at ten to two.
That was actually addressed, and we kinda left a notice with that guy's little thingy that he brought in.
There's been assembly.
And then he disappeared after that.
Now he's in the Port of Duwato.
And patrols are done Friday and Saturday through there between ten.
Thank you.
So that's when I do do those patrols.
We, we see you.
But there's only so much I can do.
We see you.
I come through, I drive through, by the time I leave, it's not like I can come back when I know nothing's going on.
Well, and ideally, what needs to happen is it'd be nice to have a police officer and get a little pressure here to sit there, because it's not just the drug activity or the crazy activity, they're also going sixty, seventy miles an hour around that corner.
They are.
And so there's a huge, and I've seen eleven accidents, one into my fence just on that corner since I've lived there. None of them been really bad, but still, you know, I have kids, I have family, there's a lot of other family and kids there, so it'd be nice to get that presence.
Every couple of weeks, somebody comes through there and does some brodies.
Oh.
I mean, it, it just happens, you know?
With that being said though, you know, I, I know the activity. I watch you guys help them back the people down that can't back down. I watch the boats come off the trailer, cause they unhook their safety strap too soon. I know, it's fun, don't get me wrong, but there are some problems, you know, and so just putting that on the record. The last thing that I wanted to ask moving forward, before the other citizens speak, is that, does the Port of Allen have jurisdictional boundary? Does it go into Kitsap County? So one of the things that I think you should also put on your agenda or for discussions is, we know that the bypass is going to be engineered shortly. And you're looking at buying property in Mason County at the intersection of North, or Log Yard Road. My piece was one of the pieces that were in contingency for the, the buyout. It would make sense, if you're going to invest any money into Mason County land, and there's going to be all that improvement to the intersection of Log Yard Road. One, the owners of the land up there, we do not want a roundabout. Our trucks will just blow through it anyway. They're too big. So, number two, if you're looking at actually starting the bypass, it should actually make sense if you could tie in the infrastructure, build that that you're already doing with the, with the already park and ride and your industrial park at that location. So Mason County as a whole, and the Port of Allen taxing District, will gain from the intersection of the bypass and not almost all of Kitsap County's property.
Perfect.
So it would make your property a lot more valuable, and people would wanna rent it faster. So, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Uh, my name's Doug Impy. I do not own any property in Duwato, but my dad and my brother do. They own fifty-seven acres, and it's part of our family. We've lived there thirty years or better. And we want no economic improvement. If anything, we wanna cut it back a little bit. The park is a pain in the butt. We're the first driveway past the park, so flat tires, dead batteries, too much beer, whatever it is, they come to our house. Cause we got backhoes and tractors, so all of a sudden, where are the fix-it guys? It kinda, it's all right sometimes, you know, nice day, you don't mind helping a guy, but the ten o'clock, three in the morning guys, the drunk guys show up. Litter, like, uh, he said, there's guys living in that campground many times a year. You go by there and you'll see the same trailer four weekends in a row, and it's getting more and more stuff piled up, and you have to call the police and then victim. Basically, the campground has been a cash cow. I don't know if you guys knew Chris Falen?
Oh, yeah.
It was a good deal for her and Les. They made seven or eight bucks a head in there, and I think, I'm sure they gave a little to the porter, but it was kinda their income for the, they were retired. It was kinda their way just to stay busy moving around. It wasn't a, it's not, I mean, I don't know what their finance situation was. I wasn't involved, but we did a lot of work for them down there. My dad has tractors. Me and my brother and my dad spent time down there straightening up, you know, helping them. So, it's not really like there's a bunch of money rolling through there. Maybe on a good weekend, you might make two hundred and fifty bucks. I'll give you three hundred to not have people there, you know what I mean? It's kinda...
Seventy-five dollars in the last four months of parlaying.
So, yeah, so we're talking some high finances. Yeah, so, I just wanna stringently say, please leave it be and don't join in with now, uh, well, I don't know what the port commissioner gal's name, uh...
Lynette.
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 Or the new one. I mean, the director or the commissioner?
Whatever. There's, there, I think they're all related. There's like a family that's kinda running it. That's cool, but I don't want no part of them or their clan, and they seem to kinda think they run roughshod over the whole area. Don't appreciate that, but they are kinda like Nazis on the campground, I understand, only when it comes to collecting money. Not picking up trash, not throwing scumbags out, not anything else, not the noise. We get a lot of it at our house. You can hear gunshots, motorcycles, you know, and that's fine, but every night, all summer, it gets a little... Yeah, that's all I have to say. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Please consider our, uh...
No more growth.
Our no more grow, growing, is that a word?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm his brother and I'm his second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Wilson. I live on North Shore Road in Duwato. And, uh, the one thing I've noticed is, not only has the litter gone up, you have people dumping their drug waste on North Shore Road, you have, uh, drugs being dealt out of boats, you have, the campground, as far as I'm concerned, we ought to give the three acres back to whoever owns that, and put a fence around it and make it a, a, a family venue for people that live in Duwato. So they can go down to the river. Um, I don't think there's any place for any growth or anything. I don't want it. I didn't move out there. I work in Seattle, I drive two hours each way. I don't drive two hours each way to go out and enjoy more, uh, storage units and people that are, uh, misbehaving and doing things to the land. Uh, I have to be honest with you, I have not seen one single person, and I've been, I've lived in the area for 12 years, do anything positive for the land, who come out there to, for recreational purposes, for whatever purposes. I've never seen anybody do anything positive. Because of that, I'm, I'm totally against it. Um, I don't count on the police, I know that they won't come. Uh, so I police my own area. Um, I'm tired of hunters coming in and trying to poach deer that we have in, in that general area. Um, I have blind kids, so I'm very sensitive. Um, you know, I'm not, I'll break out my AR, you come hunting on my property, I'll figure you're shooting at me. Uh, I, I have no time for it. I don't want any growth. I'm tired of putting up with the crap that goes on down along the beach road.
From the clam factory back.
Yeah, from the clam factory back. Uh, we have a, a fair number of nutcases that live down there. We don't need any, any more coming in there, I'll tell you. So I'm totally against it.
Is the clam factory that building on the spitfire?
It's actually the oyster, whatever it was.
Oh, the old oyster house, okay.
Yeah, and it's private property, I guess, so we have no jurisdiction or no... But, needless to say, I'm totally against it. I want to be left alone. I moved out there for privacy, and I don't have problems with my neighbors, but I do have problems with people that are coming in there, so...
Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Do you want to address any of that?
Yeah.
We've got, we've got one more, Jean. Hi, Jean.
I didn't come here intending to speak, Jane Bray from Duwato, and, um, anyway, I will just say that, um, the letter, Larry's letter, uh, which was written, was photocopied and provided to all the persons that attended the last port meeting, and it was read as, allowed for the record as per his request. And, um, I wanted to reread it and maybe bring it this evening, but I just didn't, that just didn't occur, but, um...
I have a copy over here, I'll read it if you'd like.
Oh, alright. Um, yes, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe the other people, it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Maybe, maybe you would like to do it for your own education too. Um, but at any rate, um, what I would say is that a lot of the things people have been discussing up here, or whatever, happened before Mr. Copeland's tenure at the Port of Allen, with the collaboration between the two ports and stuff, that has just, you know, his colleagues has gone on and, and stuck, and so that it, it wouldn't be just attributed to, say, an A executive director of the Port of Allen or any other commissioners. And it's just that, um, the Port of Duwato is, is such a smaller tax base than the Port of Allen is, that has contained in, in its tax district. And that we, we can't really afford, uh, to have some of the things that the port commissioners of the Port of Duwato would like to, to do always, so that's what I had to say.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
You know, one more coming up. Oh, no, he's going to the bathroom.
Yeah, come on out, Earl. And I want to, like, finish on Jean's comment, you know? We're confused. There's discussions, there's no discussions. You know, where does it fit? You know, please just put this down, we are not in favor, and I don't think you would probably get more than 10% or even less of the community that would even support an annexation. Don't even know if it's even part of your agenda. There's rumors, we wanted to address them before they came fact, because what we have already had happen to us. We also were told, it's just in discovery, we're just coming up with ideas, and then before we know it, we have a comprehensive plan that's allowed all this to go through, including, part of it was the Mankie property, a commercial boat ramp. You can't even go out and catch a crab there today, let alone try and publicize it, so please try and keep economic growth out of our area. Because what we're prepared to do is turn it around and get new people elected, and we're going to put the growth in your backyard.
Good. Thanks, Earl.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Larry.
This is a case of no good deed goes unpunished. Your executive director has called us, I don't know how many times. What do I do about this? What do I do about that? How do I handle this? How do I handle that? What do we have to do about that? And we've tried to help. Talked to her on the phone and whatnot. She calls Washington Ports Association, I talked to them, they, uh, they said, yeah, she calls us a lot too. And that, I'll just leave it at that.
She calls everyone, but the people that live there?
Well...
That's, that's between, that's between you and them. It doesn't have anything to do with us. So anyway, one day, they were having, she was having some kind of meltdown about something, and she called here. So Leanna and I said, would you like us to come out there and see if we can help? Said, yes. So we drove out there. During our discussion, she spent a lot of time talking about the one commissioner that, uh, was not related to her, since the other commissioner had resigned. And, uh, and then, the commissioner that is related to her came to bring her lunch. So we sat there and we talked, mostly listened, to them complain about the other commissioner. And the idea of a merger came up, not from us. So I'll just leave that right there, you all can figure that part out.
We can have a merger.
That was the end of the discussion. I came back and talked to each one of these commissioners individually, and they're like, not only no.
We can finish there.
So...
I wouldn't be for it personally either. I think it's important.
I don't feel about our commissioner.
And, now, there's another question that came up. So the one commissioner that wasn't there asked me about our pay station at the North Shore. And it's been a very successful thing for him.
Very helpful, yeah.
So I told him, if you'd like, I'll find out if you could put one there, because I know it works on cell service, and there's no cell service there. So, phone call was made to the phone company there. Uh, I called the vendor for the, the machine and said, you know, there's no cell service, how does that work? You know, is it possible to put one there or not? He said, yeah, you gotta have a DSL line. We called the phone company there, they said, we, yeah, we didn't know this. They, but the phone company called back and said, yes, we can put a DSL line there. I told the other commissioner, that was the end of it. You know, there was no letters written, there's no email, the whole thing was a phone call. That was it.
Ted came here and talked to you that one day.
Yeah, he came here and talked to me for, uh, three hours one day. Um, you know, like I wrote in the letter, we're not out there lurking, waiting to jump on your port district and take it over and write economic development down on you. We don't want anything to do with it.
Seventy-five dollars in the campground.
Well, you know, what Ted was...
That's what she turned in, I guarantee you, it's a hundred percent.
What Ted was thinking was that if there was money being, you know, going through that campground, he wanted somebody to be accountable for it. That was the idea of the machine.
They collect nightly by hand, cash only, and then they head out of the valley, don't even live in Duwato.
Yeah, well, see, you know, we put the pay machine out there, it just takes credit and debit cards, and we, we went from handling a lot of cash, not even a lot of cash, but, you know, handling cash, to handling almost none out there.
Are your cameras functioning out there, or are they just dummy cameras?
Of course they're functioning.
Because I see the wire unplug and hang in there, and I'm like, well, that's not going to be...
It's a deterrent.
I'd like to add also...
We'd like to get cameras out.
My family has oystered out in Duwato for a very long time. Duwato is beautiful and pristine, and when he, when Larry talked to me about it, we haven't talked about it as a board at all, first I'll tell you that. But when Larry talked to me, I was absolutely against that. Um, I understand how beautiful Duwato is, and if I lived out there, if I had, I would, I would want the same thing that you want. And so, um, I would say absolutely not.
In the letter that I wrote out there, well, I, I said there's some misconceptions about all this. But misconception number three, while Washington Ports are primarily charged with bringing economic development and jobs to their district, that isn't their only purpose. In many small communities like Duwato, the port is a glue that binds a community together to achieve its goals. In the case of Duwato, it was obvious from the forum that one of those goals might be to help protect the quality of life the residents originally moved there for. On the other hand, the port's ability to secure grants and low-interest loans could be instrumental in achieving beneficial community outcomes, like construction of the helipads, who many residents spoke of at the forum. You know, that's the kind of thing your port can do for you. And, you know, but the bottom line there is, there's no benefit to the Port of Duwato residents to agree to be annexed into, or, yeah, annexed into the Port of Allen, or any benefit for the Port of Allen to initiate such a move. And I said, I'd welcome the opportunity to come to one of your commission meetings and answer any and all questions for your community, so we can put the misconception to rest once and for all.
Could I ask a quick question? You said you met with each of the commissioners individually? Why didn't you do it and bring it to a public meeting?
I felt like if, if they wanted to pursue such a thing, that public meeting would be the, the place to do that, but that if they didn't want to pursue it, it was obvious to me after watching the video that you recommended I'd watch, that the people in Duwato didn't want anything to do with it.
Isn't a serial meeting, we meet with each one individually?
Not really.
I didn't, I didn't give any input.
No.
It was just informational.
And we're, we're asking ourselves to bring in outside people that are not appreciating our community, so that two or three people can have jobs. And a lot of residents don't know why this makes sense, because we are not going to be in the economic growth and viability part of being a port. But we still probably want to keep our protection of maybe being the port, so that we have a better say than just being a rural Mason County with, you don't really know both other things, with commissioners in Mason County. But there is a dig, there's a stigma here right now, why are we paying taxes for a select few, you have jobs, good-paying jobs, that are asking you guys how to do them, and at the same time, bringing in all the people that we don't want, and abusing them.
Might I suggest that one of you run for port commissioner out there?
I gotta do a ton for all of this.
Have you got the third one in yet?
She hasn't been bargained.
Just as long as we're here, um, for the record, yes, um, one of the things that was out in that meeting, I was not there during this, but, um, the port commissioner for District 2 was selected to hold the inspired term, and the person chosen is actually Ray Mo.
Oh, yeah. The, the, who?
Ray Mo is an architect.
With the press here and everything, especially, and also, as long as we're all gathered here, um, I was going to say that I was not there for this portion of the meeting either, but, um, as coincidence, it was a sheer coincidence about the, the fact that there was the heliport brought up in, um, Ray Copeland's letter, and then, and this might not be a great thing to go in the newspaper, but at any rate, um, previous, well, okay, it so happens, it's just a fair coincidence, but a person was there on part of the Signor of the Salmon Center, Monica Harrell, and, um, she talked about how they would like to see a heliport go in, they're looking into certain sites, uh, to foster interest in heliport, and she came and spoke in the public comments part of the, of the meeting, and as a coincidence, Monica Harrell is the council commissioner for District 2, Port of Duwato.
A lot of the salmon people interest in the heliport.
In order to finish their two-hill bridge project, there's, they have to remediate the existing helipad, and they're hoping to transfer it up. So then, it wouldn't be a tax burden to the citizens of Duwato to have a helipad there, they would be actually...
Where's the helipad now?
Right there, that whole lot connects to the, um...
Oh, bridge.
...fire station, you know, and before you cross over to...
Oh, yeah. Case for all of that.
So, so could I recommend that maybe we offer up, once the commission's been set at the Port of Duwato, that we have a joint meeting to, to clear up some misconceptions, and they can ask us the questions they have, and I think, I think things got, you know, through rumor mill, and things got a little beyond what they were.
As a family out there, I'm not saying any names, but they've kind of weaseled, weaseled their way into some type of leadership in the middle of a chaotic situation, and they know most people there don't want any part of meetings like this, or people asking, they just want to be left alone. So they've manipulated their way around everything, and not, they don't keep nobody informed, but I've never had that lady talk to any of us.
But I think it would be a good idea.
It would be great.
I'd be happy to have, have a joint meeting at the Port of Duwato building.
We can put a sign up and tell the locals, you know, because they're like, didn't you check your email? I said, hell, I ain't got no email.
What, what I'm interested in doing for the Port of Duwato is helping you and achieving whatever, whatever it is that the community wants. I mean, that, that's what I'm interested in doing. If it's, if it's a, if it's help with management, if it's help with, you know...
We'd like to keep the community center, we'd like to see, it's actually a disaster center. They actually have a full disaster center planned there. We've used it twice, the old seven flats in the fire. We would like to actually see our tax dollars go into enhancing the survival of the community there. We would actually like to see the helipad, maybe some emergency fire here, you know, we went through the academy trying to do that, but I'm not living there full-time, so I can't really help out much there, but there are some good ideas that can be done, but the biggest thing is the support from any, even Mason County or the state. The Port of Duwato residents do not want to see any growth in economic viability there. We want to see it protect, it's the end of the road. It's the end of the United States, as it knows.
So at the end of today's meeting, we will discuss, under continuance, we will discuss setting up, we'll have Larry call, is it Leanna?
Yeah, Leanna.
You're calling her first.
Try to set something up.
She calls you twice a week.
And, uh, who's the board chair?
Probably just...
Lynette, and I can call her and ask, reach out as board chair to board chair, and, yeah, and just see if we could, you know, I think some things need to be cleared up that, and it's a public meeting, so you guys can all come and hear, hear what there is to be said, and leave it at that. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Hey, I, just make one secret.
Sure.
You can tell me if I'm saying...
No, I won't do it.
...Duwato, because I will. But, uh, it seems to me that you have a pretty meager turnout at your meeting, and part of the reason I feel it is because it was at 6:00. You might want to consider having your meetings later.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you can tell me to pound sand.
No, thank you.
Get back to Duwato and work on your heliport.
Jeff?
You've got a beautiful community.
Well, thank you.
And it sounds like you've got a great, uh, port.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Jeff Carey, um, a couple things.
Jeff Carey, couple of things. One is, last meeting, we talked about, or I talked about the TIPCAPS Transportation Improvement Committee is out trying to find out projects for different organizations, other port districts and EDC and others. And we're still continuing to try to solicit that. So if there's something from the Port of Allen, you know, get it down to County Public Works and so we can look at it. We do have an annual review in, I want to say July, in August, where we look at one year transportation improvement projects for the next year, as well as then the next six years. But we review it every year in the July and August timeframe. So if there's things, projects, please bring that to it. I also got an email from one of the consultants that was doing the study for Allen's local roads. They're going to have a, I believe on the 11th, isn't it? I think it's 11th of May, down here, downstairs here, a kind of a community open house.
Who's putting that on?
The county, but I don't know who the consultant is they hired.
Okay.
Mason County.
Do you know what time?
I can't remember. I got the email, but I can't remember. I wasn't expecting it. Yeah. And as far as from the TIPCAPS committee's point of view, an understanding, I should say, is that Belfair will be falling after that here in the summer months. Because they have a tight, a fairly snug window of working. So the first project they're working is Allen, a smaller overview and what have you, whereas they are spending more money, more time, will be in the Belfair area. So as far as it's taking, you know, four, five months, they're going to probably try to wrap up Belfair by the end of this year. Or, you know, maybe as early as October, but somewhere in there. So that will be coming, and that's another thing that the port should be at least aware of and what have you. You mentioned on the, just a question, and you may not know this, on your accounting, the one thing we, the port strives to do, once upon a time, is to try to get, finally, when we have the ability to look at years past, so we could compare. When you guys convert, will you still have that capability of looking back?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because then you're flying blind, and then you don't know where you are relatively. On the, I got two more points.
Sure.
On the public records software, first of all, I'm in favor of having that kind of type of mechanism. But one, from my standpoint, you know, minutes and agendas and all that are really easy to put in, because they're already online and what have you. But for the sake of, somewhat for the sake of budgets, I would have no problem, personally, I'd have no problem where you just scan in the things that people are requesting, and then so, because it's literally, most of the time, it's going to be wanted to be looked up anyway at some point in time. So, you know, all I'm saying is I don't want to see the port spend a bunch of money scanning a bunch of records that maybe somebody might look at. I mean, it's nice that they're there, it's convenient that it's there, and I appreciate that. But maybe things like your comp plan and things like that, they get scanned in and they're there. But let people make the requests. When they make the requests, have a process, and then get that part scanned in and leave it that way. In other words, don't go for the whole caboodle, because you got a lot of records. And records, it can drive you nuts when you're trying to do that. So, I mean, I'm just mainly trying to see, as a taxpayer in Allen, it's, you know, this port district, I'd like to see you have that, just like I'd like to see you have this camera thing, where you're recording meetings. I'd like to see the same thing with records, but just scan the ones that are being requested. As a thought. And then last but not least, this, even though I'm not that old, or at least I don't think I'm that old, from an historical point of view, and I can appreciate now that I hear this side of it from the standpoint of Duwato, you know, Port of Duwato versus the Port of Allen, as far as what's going on, from a kind of a stand back and look at point of view, in a weird way, this is like deja vu all over again in a different way with the Port of Tahuya. And as a taxpayer of Port of Allen, just stay clear. You know, personally, personal observation, Port of Tahuya was not ready for primetime. And they got it all messed up, they got the whole community all screwed up, and then everybody was, you know, upset at everybody. And I don't want to see that, I don't want to see the Port of Allen, you know, even on the southern sides of it, let alone the middle of it. And they don't deserve it. And if, you know, if they want the port district credit, if they don't, there's a process, just like, you know, for creating it, or whatever. So just, as many of you know, at least from what I saw from my father and my other brother go through with the Port of Tahuya, just, you know, stay clear of it. Because there is a difference of what people are looking for. In the case of Port of Tahuya, it was much like Duwato, there wasn't a lot of people there. Most of the people that came in there were summertime people. They didn't even have a vote, you know, even on the whole thing. And so, and a lot of people, again, they, it was kind of their way, they wanted to be out there, they really didn't want a lot, you know, just want to be left alone and move ahead. And I can understand that, and, you know, that's their right and what have you. So stay clear. That's my only thing.
Thanks, Jeff.
I have one more question about your computer things. I'm very astounded about what you're saying. I'm very computer savvy, but is there any way you can utilize the high school computer classes to input your information? There's probably software that you could buy cheap, give it to the high school and have them implement it, and they could probably kill two birds with stone, give them a little experience inputting professionally, and get it for free, since we're already paying for it.
Your turn, yeah. Jeff, I do have a question about projects for TIPCAP. How do I get them to you? Do I get them to you?
Send them to Loretta.
Okay. Good, yes. No, I see her on. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Going to move on to continuance. We are going to schedule a workshop, which would be a budget workshop. And, yes, literally.
I'm gone right here.
And we have the, so, yeah, when's our conference? Seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth?
Seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, and yes, I'm going.
Sixteen, the night, we'll go over the night of the sixteenth and seventeenth.
What about here?
And I am going for sure. I thought I told someone that, but I mean, I don't know. I am going to be there for sure. Yeah, you can register me.
I need you registered.
What about this week, right here?
Yeah, we probably want to do it that week, because the bowling weekend is Memorial Day, and then we're at the end of the month. So if we are to do it in May, the 22nd through the 26th.
Okay, sure. I'm wide open, I think.
And we determined that...
The 25th is the EDC membership drive.
Okay.
Are we not going to go to that, though? Are we going to...
Well, we're not going to sponsor it.
We're not going to sponsor it. But are you going to go? Okay.
Fridays are out for all of us.
Yes.
So that leaves the 23rd and the 24th. What was Monday?
Twenty-second.
But was there a reason we couldn't do it on Monday?
No.
Okay.
It's just that I have something going on, but what else is new?
You're okay for Monday? I'm okay for Monday.
Okay.
Six o'clock, Monday.
So six o'clock, the 22nd? Here.
Yes. And then I will, I will reach out to Lynette.
Yes, is that her name?
What's Lynette's last name?
McLean.
McLean.
M-C-L-E-A-N.
And then Larry will reach out to Leanna. I get those two confused. Yeah, and then we'll maybe shoot for something in June that works for everybody.
Oh, for both Duwato and us?
For a joint meeting.
Okay, June for what? For a meeting?
For a joint meeting with Duwato.
Do you want to mention it to them, maybe?
So for the audience, we are, we are full for May, so our, the soonest we can do a meeting, a joint meeting, would be later in the month, in June, after our regular meeting. But we'll make sure that it's, I will contact the board chair, Larry will contact the director of Duwato, and then the purpose of the meeting will be to have the public in to discuss.
Yeah, if you give us a couple weeks, we'll clean up a couple signs. A lot of guys don't even have phones out there. We can assign it, just a meeting about our rights, they'll be...
Can we, who can we use as a point of contact?
Use the executive director.
Yes.
I don't, I mean, I'm a joint member for both Allen and Port of...
Our director will contact Leanna.
Use the one that they hate.
And we will have...
The commissioner that complained about these...
And we'll announce it, so if you can, check our website, we'll announce it. And if they have a website, we could ask that they put it on there, too.
Who has a website?
Port of Duwato.
Port of Duwato.
Nothing further?
I think that's it.
Nothing further? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Yes, thank you.